Before we start, when we go through the usual housekeeping, the instructions in the event of a fire are on the screen behind me and on the screen pointing towards the gallery. If you hear the fire alarm, make sure you know where your nearest exit is, and we meet over under the canopy at Waitrose. Could you all make sure, please, that your mobile phones are either off or turned to silent? Councillors, can I ask you to make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console so that we can hear you? And make sure you do speak into the microphone again for the webcast. Members of the public, we give you the same warning every time: this is not a public meeting. We welcome your contributions when you come to public speaking, but please will you remain silent, however emotional you get during the debate. This is meeting in public; it's not a public meeting, I'm afraid. So can I just introduce the officers who are supporting us this evening? Could someone turn the light, I hope it still works? Thanks. So on my far right is Lewis Jones, the planning lawyer this evening; to his left Beth Howland-Smith, who is our Development Management Manager; Patrick Arthurs, to Beth's left, who is the Deputy Development Management Manager. I'm sure that's awful, but I'm sure I'm not supposed to say 'control' anymore. We haven't got Chris with us; we have Olivia Goram, who is our planning officer, and Chris Turner, also a planning officer. Right, I thought we had Philippa. She's coming later, right, okay. I will introduce her later if she comes. So let's move on then to the agenda. Do we have any apologists? Well, do the minutes first. Can I confirm the minutes that have been laid on the table before this meeting? Quite happy that I've signed those. Apologies for absence, Amy.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from councillor Knowles.
And any disclosures of interest?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Peter Rushwood has declared a non-percuni interest in item A2 as he is a member of Hindhead Playing Association.
And I take it there's the usual interests from Haysmere Town Councillors who have got a general interest, I mean, but have come to this meeting with fresh minds? Do we have any questions from members of the public, Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Questions from members, Amy?
Also none received, Chairman.
Beth or Patrick, do we have any relevant updates to government guidance this evening?
Thank you, Chairman. Members may be aware that there's a recently updated MPPF 2019 that's recently been published. The changes are very minor and the assessments remain as set out in your agenda reports. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Beth. And does anyone wish to speak to the performance against government targets this evening? Do I take it that's a no, or are you going to...
Sorry, Chairman. Thank you. Members will note the planning services' performance on speed and quality, and you'll note that we are achieving well against the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. So we'll move on swiftly, it's a long agenda as you know, so we'll move on swiftly to the applications for planning permission, should any site inspections arise in this meeting, that meeting they will be held on Tuesday the 2nd of April, at a time to be agreed. So can we move straight on then to the first application, application A1, WA 2018 1308?
Chairman, on a point of order, may I move for a deferral of this application? I visited the site today, it is extremely steep, 45 degrees would be a fair estimate, and I feel it would be difficult for the committee to make a fair assessment of the merits and demerits of the application without conducting a site visit.
Thank you, councillor Mellner. You know my views on late site visits, I feel it's unfair to the applicant. I also don't believe that an individual member should go on a site visit because you leave yourself open if you've spoken to one person on the site, there's not everybody else. Having said that, do we have a second for your motion? Does anyone wish to speak to that motion, or do we just put it straight to the vote? So we have a suggestion that we defer this for a site visit, can I see all those in favour of deferral?
One, two, three, four, Chairman.
And those against a deferral?
Three, Chairman.
In that case...
Have we got abstentions?
Oh, sorry, does anybody abstaining?
Two abstentions.
In that case, that application is deferred for a site visit, which will be on the 2nd of April, at a time to be agreed, as we have already noted. Just leave it at that. I do apologise to the public speakers for this, because you've come along in good faith to speak, and I apologise too to the applicant, because obviously we had no idea that you would not get your decision this evening. So I'm very sorry, but if you wish to leave, you're very welcome to do so before we move on. Before we move on, can I just remind you of the code of conduct, do check what it says, and also could you also check the procedures for calling in an application both to committee and for a site visit? Both can be done at the same time, very early on in the process. You can always withdraw your application should you not wish to do so later, but it's not really acceptable to have too many deferrals like this, for obvious reasons. Moving on then to item A2, WA 2018 0973, land south of Grange Road, Tilford. And it's Chris, I suppose, who's going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. Applications for the change of use of land for six football pitches, together with associated parking and outbuilding to provide facilities. The site is located to the south of Grange Road and to the east of Frenchham Little Pond. The site comprises two elements: to the north of the site is an area of hard standing, to the south, sorry, to the north of Grange Road is an area of hard standing and a tarmac road; to the south of Grange Road is open fields. This slide shows an aerial photograph, you can see Frenchham Little Pond to the left of the, sorry, to the, yeah, to the west of the site, which is here, and you can see that it currently comprises open fields. The block plan shows that there would be a mix of pitch sizes, with three smaller pitches towards the north of the site and the larger pitches to the south. The area of parking proposed is on the area of hard standing here and extending into the site along the road here. Further north of that, there is some overflow parking proposed. Photograph A is looking to the east, photograph B is looking to the west. Photograph C is looking towards what would be the overflow parking area, and photograph D is the main hard standing, what is referred to in the application as the formal parking Photograph E is taken from within the site, looking back towards the entrance. I'd just like to draw off his attention to the tree boundary along the edge of the site in this location, and photograph F shows the approximate location of the toilet block. Photograph G and H is just to give members an idea of the openness of the site and the current agricultural character. The massive consideration of this application, we consider to be the impacts on the AOMB and AGLV, the impact on noise and the impact on the highway. The application is recommended for refusal on the grounds that insufficient information has been submitted in relation to noise and the impact on the AOMB. Earlier on this week, I think it was Tuesday, we did receive a noise report from the applicant. We got comments from environmental health, which you should have seen on the update addendum, who have maintained their objection. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. This is an item subject to public speaking. Could I ask Mr Quinn, first of all, please, who objects to the proposal? I think it has all been explained to you, but you have four minutes from when you first press the large button and the light comes on.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee today. I have been asked to speak to you by a number of the local residents who have objected. The location, site proposed, is heavily constrained, protected landscape being designated as being in the Surrey Hills area of outstanding natural beauty in the Green Belt, designated area of great landscape value, is immediately adjacent to the Wildon Heath triple S.I. and the National Trust Frenchham Little Pond, visible from the Frenchham Little Pond car park, and is protected by an Article 4 direction. The site and its surroundings are rural and are characterised by open views and a countryside feel. The area is valued for its remoteness and tranquility alongside its ecological value. It is enjoyed by National Trust visitors and is popular for dog walkers, given the above special qualities and attributes. Frenchham Little Pond is a sanctuary for wildlife, including some 90 different types of birds, that are able to be observed and viewed from different places around the common, including two bird hides. The bird hide on the eastern side of Frenchham Little Pond is approximately 350 metres away from the proposed football pitch sighting. In relation to noise and views being harmed, both the National Trust and Surrey Hills ANOB officer have objected to this development. They feel that the general noise and traffic generated by the football pitch proposal would be visually intrusive and harmful to the area. This is also a concern of the local residents. The National Trust feel that the bird hide on the eastern side of the pond would be under significant threat of continued existence due to the football pitch noise that would be generated during the matches and getting to and from the matches. They feel that the proposals would disturb the peaceful amenity of the common, and in particular, bird watching activities. Traffic: the roads are rural in nature and will simply not be able to accommodate the extra football traffic without risk of major disruption and potentially further gridlock. The transport assessment specifically identified that visibility from the Grange Road on to Tilford Road is highly constrained. This would be unsuitable for any additional use, given highway safety issues that could arise. This is why, in the proposal, vehicles are being directed by volunteers to exit through the Green Hills Estate. However, we are concerned whether the applicant would make this long-term sustained. Adverse urbanisation: the Surrey Hills ANOB officer has commented that the proposal for laying football pitches across the site would be incongruous to this rural character of the surrounding area, as it would adversely urbanise the appearance of the area and introduce an unacceptable formality. The introduction of football pitches is an inappropriate use for this site, given it is more akin to an urban environment. It is not in keeping with this landscape area, it would harm the tranquility and peacefulness for the area. Furthermore, people using this facility will rely on the use of a private car, given its remoteness from the built-up urban areas it could and should be located in. Article 4: the reasons for the Article 4 direction are no doubt because of the sensitive nature of this area. The predecessors of this council clearly had very good reasons, as guardians of the borough back in 1958, to decide that this area of landscape and countryside was so very important that they would create, in addition to Green Belt, ANOB and AGLV policies, an Article 4 direction to further limit and control development on this land. We are also extremely concerned that the applicant has already installed infrastructure to the site and has erected high fencing to the perimeter boundaries. This, again, is not in keeping and is further eroding the landscape character. We would like to open up a dialogue with the applicant in order to investigate ways of more appropriate perimeter fencing, such as native hedgerows, traditional estate or timber cleft fencing, which would be far more appropriate. The planning officer's report concludes that the application proposal is not in accordance with the development plan, and that the benefits of the football pitches would not outweigh the adverse impacts in relation to the intrinsic character and beauty of the ANOB, AGLV, etc. We agree, and strongly urge the committee that permission should be refused. To urbanise this beautiful, quiet rural area would be a disaster.
Thank you, Mr Quinn. Thank you. Can I ask now Mr Beals from the parish council to come to the microphone? The same for you, Mr Beals, four minutes from when you press the red button.
Committee members will recall that in August 2017 they resolved to refuse permission for a temporary festival event over one or two long weekends on the same site, also involving football pitches, and submitted by the same applicant. In our view, many of the reasons given for refusal of the previous application apply to the current one, and once again, we have objected. The change of use proposed would be inappropriate in this sensitive location, with no special circumstances sufficient to outweigh the harm of the Green Belt in terms of visual amenity. It would also result in the intensification of the use of the land and have an urbanising effect in the open countryside. These effects would be in conflict with the conservation objectives of the AOMB and the AGLV, and with the maintenance of the intrinsic beauty of the landscape about which our community cares deeply. The current application is for a permanent, rather than a temporary, change of use, presumably lasting in perpetuity for the duration of each annual football season. The adverse effects of a permanent change on the local quality of life, in terms of traffic generation, noise, disturbance and vehicle emissions, would have the potential to be even worse than the temporary change, as neighbouring residents and the nursing home on Grange Road would have to endure continual vehicle movements and noise from the playing pitches, weekend after weekend, throughout the football season. The site is remote from urban areas and is not serviced by public transport, so players, officials, spectators, parents and so on would necessarily travel by car. Grange Road is merely a quiet rural byway open to all traffic, which is much used by walkers, cyclists and horse riders, and not suited to heavy traffic flows. There are no footways in Grange Road. Access for vehicles at both the Priory Lane and Tilford Road ends of Grange Road is severely constrained, and we're not convinced by the suggestion in the travel management plan that traffic circulation could be controlled by a coordinator. Vehicle drivers will inevitably use public roads, as is most convenient for them, and as they are entitled to. Madam Chairman, any reasonable person would assume that if granted permission for a change of use, the landowner would attempt to place the widest possible interpretation on what might constitute recreational use, in order to take maximum commercial advantage of any such principle established. We are therefore concerned that the site might have further infrastructure added and be made available for as yet unspecified and potentially objectionable activities in the football off-season. The material considerations on which we have based our objections are set out in more detail in our formal representation of 8th of July 2018, which remains valid and is available online. Once again, we urge the committee to refuse this application. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Beals. And finally, could I ask Mr Connelly and Mr Craddock to come to the microphone? And you have four minutes between you, I don't mind how you divvy it up. The microphones do swing round to minimise the break between you, but it's the same rules, please, four minutes from when you first press the big button.
I haven't got a prepared speech, but what I'd like to do, after listening to the concerns of the objectors, is run through each one of these in turn. One of the major ones is the impact on the AOMB, and there has been a representation from the AOMB management body to say that they object. Now, first of all, I'd like to say that those objections should be set aside if, one, the application is in the national public interest. Now, this application had been tested by Sport England against the MPPF, and they supported it. In addition, paragraph 146 of the MPPF states that sporting facilities in the Green Belt should be an appropriate use. The next test is whether or not the need for development could be reasonably met elsewhere. Waverley Borough Council's own study has proved there are no other locations for a facility of this type. Matt Lang, your own officer, is supportive of this application. The Bourne Blades themselves have spent seven years looking for other schemes, it has been suggested for other locations. It had been suggested by the objectors that they could perhaps hook up with a school to do this. They have tried to speak to a number of schools, none of which have been interested in sharing facilities or helping the Bourne Blades find a home. Also, the next test is whether any environmental impacts and the extent to which they could be mitigated. Now, the consultee for this is Natural England. Natural England are very difficult to satisfy, however, they have said that we therefore consider that the identified impacts on the Wildon Heath Phase 1 Special Protection Area, and Thursley and Henley, and Frenchham Common Sites of Special Scientific Interest can be appropriately mitigated with measures secured via planning conditions or obligations as advised, and as such, they withdrew their objection. I would also note that one of the prime objectives of the AOMB is, and I read from 2.2 of the Surrey AOMB management plan, "The hills are protected as part of the London Metropolitan Green Belt and provide an outstanding natural resource for London and Surrey residents to enjoy outdoor pursuits, taste local food and explore market towns, etc., etc." This is an outdoor pursuit and should be supported by this. A number of other rejections were raised. The first one was that the junction on the Tilford Road is a very difficult place to exit the site. There is a traffic management plan in place, and all vehicles leaving the site will be via the main Green Hills Estate access, which has excellent visibility displays. This has all been negotiated with Surrey County Council, Waverley Borough Council's own consultee, who have agreed this and consider that there will be no adverse impacts. Another issue is whether this site is tranquil and remote and has a special character. At no point have we been able to find a study which supports the summary by the AOMB officer that this has a special status. There are no studies that support this. We'd also note that there are no views from the Frenchham Pond little car park to the site. I have been there myself, and it is not visible. Fencing has not been erected to protect the site at all. The fencing has been replaced, but only in the same form that it was there in the first place. I now leave Mr Craddock 30 seconds for his bit.
I mean, one thing I'd like to say, I mean, we have been looking for so many years to try and get that. We have a constant problem with matches not being able to be fulfilled because of lack of facilities, and it is getting worse. Kids are playing on increasingly worse pitches, and it's so sad that, you know, this weekend alone is a great example, we've had to cancel three matches because of it, and it's an ongoing problem which is getting worse. We would love to start a ladies' football team, a girls' football team rather, and we just haven't got the space or facility to do so, which is a real shame.
Thank you very much, both of you. May I ask you to turn the microphone off? That's lovely. Thank you very much, indeed. Right, members, over to you. Councillor Adams?
Yes, I've read both the application and the comments made by the Blades football team. One of the things that struck me from that was the fact that they're becoming more successful and are hoping to move further up the rankings in their various teams. I'm concerned that this would then be, if you like, a foot in the door. I recognise the difficulty that they have in finding suitable sites, but I'm afraid I don't believe that this is one of them. So I support the officer's recommendation, and I hear what all of the objectors have had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Councillor Rushwood?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I do note that we've got 254 letters of support for this application. Mentioned earlier that I have an interest in the Hindhead Playing Field Association, which is remarkably similar to the Blades born as a club. It's important, and I will refer to what happens in Hindhead, because I think it's important. Blades is smaller, roughly half the size, but the demographics of Hindhead and the Bourne are changing rapidly. We've got many more young people out there. In Hindhead alone, we've got 380 members of the junior football club, boys and girls. We've turned away 100 this year. The total number in the club is 520. All the work in the club, and I'm sure it would apply to the Blades, is done by volunteers. We have 48 FA coaches who hold Level 1 certificates, they're all CRB trained, they're all child welfare certificated, and they're all first aid trained. Hindhead Playing Fields is in the Surrey Hills AOMB. It's alongside the Devil's Punch Bowl, half a mile from the Golden Valley. We are on a private little track, cricket close, not a road that is suitable for public transport. You can't pass two vehicles on that road unless you go onto the grass verge. Whereas what we are looking at here in Tilford is a road that is two-way traffic, it's easily navigated, there is a big industry down there, right at the end. The pitch is on poor agricultural land. The road, as I've said, is a public road. As it approaches Frenchham Little Pond, it becomes a clear way and quite narrow. But I don't see any great beauty in looking at the car park, and in fact, if you go there, as I did today, you will see cars parked on the grass verges so they avoid the National Trust car park. Not a pretty sight, but it's of fact reality. Noise, yes, there is a little noise from kids playing football. It's a natural thing, joyous. But in this day of gross obesity, of diabetes, coach potato, couch potatoes looking at screens all the time, isn't it good that somebody is trying to form a club that produces healthy, competitive and natural progression in life? Competition isn't bad, we all get there. I might say that the Hindhead club, like the Blades, we play on the recreation ground in Beacon Hill, we also play in Liss, in Lip Hook, we play in Grayshot. The recreation ground in Beacon Hill has no toilet facilities at all. Got some strong hedges around it, but that's okay for the boys, I'm not sure about the little girls. But pitches are very difficult to come by. We have seen a reduction in them. Okay, so we'll have a 4G pitch shortly in the Edge, but that's still some way off. Pitches are vital for the continuing of sport for young people. Please, let's consider them. I do strongly feel that we've got this one wrong. I would recommend the granting of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mellner?
Thank you, Chairman. I paid a visit there this afternoon. We can have a debate about the suitability of such visits at another time. Personally, I think it's very difficult for a planning councillor to make a proper judgement on anything without knowing the venue or the site of the application. And this was educational. Grange Road itself is indeed a Grange Road itself is indeed a two-way road. The fact it's a boat is a bit of a surprise. And as councillor Isherwood has rightly pointed out, Harvest Wood Products are directly across the Grange Road from the proposed site. Now, it may just have been coincidence, but when I was there, an awful lot of noise was being made by the activities there. The one building proposed is pretty small. Turn your head through 180 degrees and you will see several very large buildings. If you look at the quality of the land, the main field is roughly square and is surrounded on all four sides by high conifers. I'm unable to see what views you would get from it or into it from outside. The same is not so true about the smaller field, which is open to the west. So while I fully understand why the officers have put forward what are normally very compelling reasons for refusal, when one considers one is not talking about development in the sense of permanent buildings of any significance, and as councillor Isherwood has correctly pointed out, the very great importance we place on encouraging sport, somewhat to my surprise, I am finding myself more and more moved to supporting the application and not supporting the officer's recommendation, though I do appreciate the reasons why it was put forward in the present form. I drove out of Grange Road onto Tilford Road. Yes, it's not the most straightforward turning, but it's perfectly possible. There was not much traffic around, I must say, but it sounds as if the organisers have thought of trying to make it easier for larger numbers. As councillor Isherwood has said, the private car is a continual visual pest wherever it goes, and yet we cope. I do think the noise argument is the most significant. The sound of voices attenuates quite fast over distance, so I think on balance, depending what colleagues have to say, I'm minded to not agree with the officer's recommendation on this occasion. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Edwards?
Thank you, madam chairman. This is a very, very difficult application to consider in terms of the balance. When you look at the need of our young people and our communities, we need to provide facilities for healthy pursuits. And having been an athletics coach for many years, and still am, and involved with athletic clubs, etc., I can understand why we should be supporting the Blades Football Club in this instance. Normally, anything in the AONB I would categorically oppose, because I believe that we're here to protect our environment. But in this particular case, and looking to the future of our young people and their needs, I think their needs outweigh the effect on the AONB, and I'm minded not to support the officer's recommendation. I'm sure that we can make conditions about noise, etc., etc. But one question I would like to ask is if the officer can advise me, if the committee were to recommend the application, is there a way by condition that we can protect it for future use in case somewhere down the line matters change and the owner might want to develop the site? So is there any way of doing that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. It's a very good question. I'm sure it's a question most of us wanted to put to the officers, so can we have an answer for that? And if there's any legal aspect to, Lewis, don't hold back, please.
Thank you, chair. We would be of the view that a planning application would be required to then change the use from recreation to anything else, and it would be at that stage that we would consider the merits of a subsequent scheme.
Lewis, is there any difficulty if we were minded to agree to this application? Is there any implications for putting sporting facilities like this in an area such as the Green Belt?
So long as members are satisfied that it's in accordance with our policy, the development plan, which is obviously what members should be led by primarily, then there should be no issue. Obviously, the MPPF is a material consideration and is national policy, so I think it would be prudent to consider the relevant MPPF paragraphs if members are minded to overturn the decision, because of course, members will need to give reasons as to why they're deciding to take a different view to that of the officer. Excuse me. I think members have suggested that the impact on the AONB is something that they're mindful of, and I think it's Para 172 of the MPPF that deals with what development would be appropriate in the AONB, and what considerations members should have in permitting development in the AONB. Just going through the three criteria very quickly, it looks to be the need for development, including in terms of any national considerations and the impact of permitting it or refusing it upon the local economy, the cost of and scope for developing outside the designated area or meeting the need in some other way, and any detrimental effect on the environment, the landscape and recreational opportunities, and the extent to which that could be monitored. So I think it would be sensible to have regard to that and any other impacts that members ultimately think are relevant.
Thank you, Lewis, because I think this is one of the most difficult applications I can remember for a long time, because we're being asked to build homes after home, and we are doing that, and putting in thousands around all our bigger settlements and some in our smaller settlements. These produce more and more people, more and more children, and yet we have fewer and fewer facilities that they're not coming along with the development. So, you know, it really is difficult to know where you can actually provide facilities like this, given the state of play at the moment of development. So I think we're all in a very difficult position trying to balance the two arguments here. councillor Round?
Thank you, madam chairman. May I ask two questions? Firstly, could I ask for clarification of the point made by the previous officer, sorry if I've forgotten your name? If we were minded to approve this application, and in future the owners of the land wished to develop it, and they would then have to argue for the change of use from leisure to residence, would we at that stage be able to invoke the Green Belt and AONB issues, given that we might be seen to have overridden them at this point? And on that, I note that the major reason for recommending refusal is, correct me if I'm wrong, the noise rather than the Green Belt and AONB. And I tend to agree with councillor Isherwood's comments that happy children is a nice noise, and they only make a noise if someone's winning. Often, it's pretty quiet. So that's my first question. Elaboration on that, please. And secondly, if we were minded to approve the development, could we put in a condition that there should be adequate greenery grown around the left-hand smaller field in order to help the noise attenuation? I do believe that vegetation helps to attenuate noise.
Thank you, councillor Round. I'm sure Chris has got some answers for you.
Yeah. Thank you, chair. In response to your first question, the AONB and the Green Belt are two separate considerations. In this particular instance, we consider it acceptable and appropriate Green Belt development. So following on from that, in regards to your question as to whether, from what I understand, from what you're asking, to overturn the officer's decision and to go against the recommendation, I don't think would prejudice you from following an officer recommendation in future. Sorry. So...
Sorry, can I help? Do you mean that in any future application to develop the land, the arguments involving Green Belt and AONB could be deployed?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Sorry.
By allowing...
You have a microphone on?
By allowing a sport and recreation use that doesn't have any built form and it isn't a suggestion, the built form would be acceptable, because it wouldn't in this particular instance. So I think that's what you're asking.
And in response to your second question, we could condition landscaping to provide more screening towards the west, towards Frenchham Little Pond. Thank you, chair.
Right, councillors and officers, anybody else wish to contribute? councillor Adams?
Well, you did mention the development plan. There was absolutely no suggestion in the development plan that any of this area around the Frenchham Common, Frenchham Pond, Hankley Common should actually be developed for formal recreation like this. For youngsters wanting to go out, there's plenty of room for them to cycle, there's plenty of room all round that whole area for them to walk, run, and any other exercise that they might like to take. What there is not provision for generally is a formal set of courts and facilities like this, and there's no suggestion, as I say, in the local plan or the area development plan that this sort of facility should be provided. It would be unique within an area of about, I suppose, almost several square miles of, as I say, heavily protected land. I remind you again that it's not only in the AONB and Green Belt, but it is within 400 metres of the Wildon Heath Spa. It's also within 24, two kilometres of the SAC buffer zone. So it's a very significant area, and that is why it's got an Article Four direction, and that is why it's been kept in an unkempt way, just available for agriculture for a long time. If we start picking pieces off it for formal recreation facilities, then that will start to destroy the whole framework of this particular area. Certainly, there is some activity across the road, I would agree with that, but that's historic in its basics of development. It's not a new activity, it's been there for more than two generations. So this is a very good idea, I agree with that, but it's in the wrong place. So that is my view. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. councillor Piper?
Thank you very much, madam chairman. I've listened with interest to both representations and my colleagues, and it is a difficult decision to make on this. However, as far as development in this area is concerned, I mean, Waverley have just approved a new centre at Frenchham Pond, a much larger centre and a warden's office. So, you know, it seems that rules can, you know, apply in certain areas but not others. Comments were made that this is not the appropriate area for such recreational activities, and that they should be more urban. The problem we have is that any urban site that we have is having to be designated for housing to meet the central government needs. And I think that we also have a requirement to consider the health and well-being of our residents, and I think that, you know, this is where we can help there. And I'm afraid I would go against the officer's recommendation.
councillor Inchbould?
Thank you, madam chairman. The need for recreational facilities, particularly for the young, is clear, I think, to all of us. I am concerned about noise, though, and particularly the point that's made in the officer's report, that no assurance has been given that public address equipment will not be used. And I think if we do grant permission, it should be conditioned that there will be no public address systems employed there and no floodlighting, because football is, of course, a game played primarily in the winter months when the afternoons are a bit shorter. So I think on balance, I would go against the officer's recommendation, but I do think it's important that those conditions are included. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take councillor King, if I may, and then come back to previous speakers. councillor King?
Thank you very much indeed, madam chairman. I have to say, I sit and ponder and am conflicted by this, because the thing that sprang to my mind is, you know, when's a field, not a field? And the answer is when it becomes a football pitch. So I just don't sort of have any argument at all about having a football pitch there. The obvious issue to me is noise. I think that the environmental health officers have come up with an extremely good suggestion of a noise management plan, and I think that could pick up the fact that they can't use the condition needs to go in there, that they can't use lighting or electronic tannoids. And I think, provided that, I really, I know the noise that comes from that other industrial use across the road, and that's pretty well every day of the week. So, you know, this is going to be on a Saturday and a Sunday, and I think with a sensible noise abatement plan in place, I am minded now, I think, to not vote for the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. I've got two more speakers, and I think perhaps we should move to the recommendation, unless anyone's got totally new points. councillor Malina?
Thank you, chairman. I'm just going to say that I had remembered the Barfield Farm case, where the point made by the inspector was, of course, that playing sport in the AONB and Green Belt has the merit of being transient and not leaving any permanent trace, except for the markings, I suppose. But the point was made, of course, the Green Belt has a particular exception, which is laid out on page 46 of our pack, which is the provision of buildings for outdoor sports. So I think in the Green Belt, the idea of it being used for this sort of purpose is perfectly well-understood and provided for, and I think it would be a little strange to accept the Green Belt argument, but then to feel the AONB would be damaged so much we couldn't allow it through for that reason. I strongly endorse the very sensible comments from councillors Inchbould and King about putting proper noise management, that is important. But I think with that, to me, the balance of advantage falls very firmly in providing more playing pitches. Organised sport is even more valuable than non-organised sport. Thank you.
Right, thank you, councillor Malina. The other speaker has withdrawn, so can we ask the officers, please? councillor Adams?
Well, I think that in view of the amount, okay, there were, as councillor Isherwood said, a large number of people in support, but I assume that there are people who are related to the Blades and people who wish to play football. There have also been a large number of objections from the local residents. I would like to suggest that, in fact, rather than giving this permanent position, we actually try it out and give a temporary approval, if that's what the members decide, and that would mean that if, in fact, it proved to be unsatisfactory after a few years, it could be revoked. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. I'll get the officers to speak on that, because I did raise that with them earlier, just to see whether it was a possibility. councillor King?
Thank you very much for letting me come back, madam chairman. Another thought that just crossed my mind, that in view of, excuse me, the previous history, planning application history of this site, recreation has a very wide definition. Are we able to make sure that it is used for football rather than having a rave or whatever, which could still be classed as recreational?
Thank you. I think we've got a flavour now of what we are trying to... I think we've got a flavour now of what we are trying to achieve here, that if we do overturn the officer's recommendation, we want to do so only by protecting this field as much as we possibly can. So I'm going to ask the officers now to answer all those points and see whether or not we can offer that protection and that reassurance. I presume you're talking to Lewis about this temporary permission to see whether that's possible, certainly earlier on they were not terribly much in favour. Right, who's going to take any of these questions?
Thank you Chair. In response to the question about floodlighting, that would require a permission itself, so we would, we think that the most appropriate measure would be an informative on any permission. In relation to the noise management plan, there is a condition we could attach to a permission that would require that prior to any development, a full noise management plan is agreed by ourselves in writing. In relation to councillor Adams' request for a temporary permission, the MPPG on, for guidance on permissions, requires that for temporary, for temporary permissions, there's got to be, I forget the exact wording, I think it's got to be a identified, there's got to be substantial reason for us to believe that the harm is so significant and such a unique, unique development, that this harm cannot, cannot be identified ahead of, without, sorry, without a temporary permission. So for football pitches, we consider that it's not such an alien use that that assessment cannot be made through the appropriate noise assessment by qualified experts.
Just before I take, can I just go down the list that I made as, as people were talking? Not only floodlights but PA systems, would that come under an informative or a condition?
Yeah, thank you, we could condition that.
And what about ancillary buildings? What's the position there if, you know, as I say, I'm thinking in terms of protecting the land. And also, while I've got the microphone, Amy's just reminded about screening to the western boundary of the site. So can you give us advice as to whether these would be conditions or informatives were we minded to overturn the decision?
Thank you Chair, we could put an informative relating to ancillary buildings and apologies, I thought, the, in relation to screening, we could put a condition relating to landscaping, which would, we could assess any proposed plans, specify species and a placement of where that planting goes. Thank you Chair.
Right councillor Adams, you wanted to come back?
Yes, you, you just said that on the MPPG, there was some position where in fact there might be some reasons why you, you had doubt over this particular activity. Well, obviously you do because you recommended refusal. So as the officers have recommended refusal, they must have doubt that this is actually, you know, a sound project, not a sound project but a practical project. So as I say, why don't we start with temporary permission and see how that works out? And if the various residents over time remove all their objections, then it can be made permanent.
I think we probably have the answer to that, but there seemed to be no grounds for, in this case, for a temporary permission, I think is what the officers are saying, because it's-
Because they've recommended refusal.
I'll take you over, I will go back to the officers councillor Adams, far be it for me to answer that question. councillor King, while the officers are deliberating?
Exactly, thank you. Just wondering, we might, we haven't picked up on my point about inappropriate recreational use of the land.
Yes, I remember somebody mentioning football and Patrick definitely nodded his head, so we'll come back to that when they've answered this question. Right, Beth, you got an answer for us?
Thank you Chairman. I think, I think we could impose a condition that it should not be used except for the purposes of outdoor sports and recreation. To limit it further, I mean, any, anything like if they wanted to play rugby there, for example, you'd need the goalposts which would be permanent fixes which would require planning permission in their own right. It would be difficult to expressly prohibit it to football and football alone when there are other just as valid sport activities and recreational activities.
But it is important to note that the plans themselves that have been submitted with the planning application can be, can form part of the planning consent and they include the layout of the football pitches. So if there's any variation to the layout of the football pitches, then that would require a subsequent planning consent. So you can't really play rugby on a football pitch unless there's a different game that I've ever played. But I think that would afford some level of, of protection, but, but we're reckoning against to think how we can absolutely tie it to, to football.
Right councillor Adams before-
Just a quick one, can we not put anything in there about non-commercial use? Could we, could we put a condition there that, you know, because the last thing we want on that site is a, I don't know, a Glastonbury turning up or whatever, so is it, is there anything we can do to put on there to stop commercialisation of the area?
Officers, we're in your hands again, is that a possibility?
I think that, just thinking about it, I think that will come back to the management plan, the management plan has to be approved. So the management plan we can condition. And within the management plan, we can stipulate the hours of operation, we can also stipulate, stipulate things like capacity, we can stipulate noise generation levels as part of a, a noise condition as well. So those elements in themselves will have a compound effect of controlling the activity on the site, both the hours of operation and the nature of it. So I think in a, in that sense, I think there is, there is a tool to ensure that it doesn't become a more commercial operation, which obviously would limit the impacts, that we are very sensitive to and that's why the officer's recommendation was what it was. But I think there are tools that we can use in order to ensure that your concerns could be addressed.
Could I just clarify that Patrick? Is that a different management plan from the noise management plan? This is a, a management plan for the whole site?
Well, it would, it would be an overall management plan that would have to be submitted. So that management plan which would control the noise would also control the hours of operation and the activity on the site.
Right, so it's not in addition to the noise management plan, the noise management plan would form part of the management plan?
Yeah.
Right, okay, fine. Right, I do really want to move to the recommendation, I've got, Beth wanted to come back, which I'm sure is very valuable.
Oh, thank you Chairman, I just wanted to provide members with comfort about festivals etc. Again, we go back to the approved plans and also the Article Four direction which does restrict, albeit to twenty-eight days, it does restrict uses, but we do have the extra comfort of the approved plans if, if you move to approve it. Thank you Chairman.
councillor Mullinah?
Sorry, I think this is, is important. I don't understand why, given that we are clearly pushing the boundaries to grant permission here, why we cannot limit that as much as we wish. So I, shall we say, I don't understand why we can't limit it to, to the playing of soccer. What is the reason why we could not do that? We're making a big exception. We are accepting the argument that the tension between the need to provide our young people with organised recreation and going against AONB recommendations, which we do not do lightly under any circumstances. Why then can we not limit the use to precisely that which we have been persuaded is so, so important? The fact you've got marked out football pitches wouldn't stop anyone holding a concert there if they wanted to. I'm not happy that we are sufficiently making use of our moral advantage, if you like, having made this view known, that we are limiting it precisely what has been asked for and not a whit more.
We're exploring options, we haven't made any decision on refusal or, or whatever at the moment, just want to make sure that we, we know what is available to us before we make the decision. Right, can we limit it to football pitches?
The, the, the use in my view would, would fall under use class D two of the use classes order, which, which is assembly and leisure. And within that, there are various uses and, and one of them is outdoor sports and recreations, which is why I thought it would be appropriate to limit it to outdoor sports and recreations. Personally, I don't, I don't think that a concert would fall within that definition. That, that's my judgement. However, if, if members were still not happy that that was clear enough, then they would have to make a judgement as to whether the condition that they're thinking of imposing is a lawful condition and whether it complies with, with the step, with the test that, that the MPPG sets out, which the particular ones that spring to mind would be whether it would be reasonable to limit it to just football, whether it would be certain enough and potentially whether it would be enforceable. Now, those are all considerations for, for members and, and it's a judgement that you all need to make as to whether it would be a lawful condition. Thank you.
Back to her, I think I can help him.
Just a moment, I just want to clarify something because we, you know, we, I want to move to, to see what members feel. And this is an exception to policy, as councillor Adams has pointed out and councillor Mullinah sort of backed, so it is an exception to policy in as much as there are no pitches allocated in our development plan in this particular area. So, you know, this is an exception and we are aware of the special nature of this site, that's come out in the debate. So what we are trying to seek for the benefit of nearby residents, were we to overturn the officer's recommendation, how much protection can we give to the surrounding residents that this will be what we believe we're giving permission for, which is a permission for young people to play football? I mean, that's basically. Now, if we can't get that reassurance, then I, I think, you know, we would find it very hard to overturn the officer's decision. So, you know, we do need clarity on that before we make the decision.
Thank you Chairman. I mean, we, we're able to provide members with assurance by proposing a condition that is according to the plans. We've, we've given you our judgement, our view on whether or not it would be necessarily test compliant to restrict it solely to football, but ultimately that is a judgement for you to make and as the committee, as the decision makers. Thank you Chairman.
I think if I could just add, and I'm just thinking about it, I think because this is an exceptional case and I think exceptional circumstances could be viewed as being reasonable, I think I would feel comfortable with that as a suggestion because I think it is an exceptional case in exceptional circumstances, in an exceptional location, which is why the officers recommend it for refusal. If officers, if members are minded to, to go against that, I think it would be, it would be reasonable to, to conclude that that is acceptable in this particular-
Right, can we then move to the recommendation? Have you really got something new to say councillor Adams?
I think I've had a satisfactory answer to the question of why we can't give it a temporary permission, especially as we've heard so much now about the various doubts that people have or concerns that people have.
I don't think we've got a huge amount more to add, other than the fact that if you, if you were minded to go against the recommendation and approve it, the circumstances between it being temporary and more permanent aren't going to change. So with that in mind, I don't think a temporary consent would, would be acceptable in this particular circumstance. That's our, that's our view and legal's view as well.
It's time to make our minds up, I don't think we're going to go any further down that, you've heard all the arguments, you know what you've got to make your mind up on and so let's move straight to the recommendation. So the recommendation is that permission be refused for the reasons set out on page sixty-one of your report. Can I see all those in favour please of a refusal?
One, Chairman.
In which case, can I see, do we have an alt, oh sorry, that's one. Oh, sorry, all those voting against that, yes, we'll do the abstentions, yes. Those against the recommendation?
Eight, Chairman.
And are there any abstentions? In which case, please, can I have an alternative recommendation and a second, please?
Recommendation to approve.
And a second. Thank you very much. So we have a recommendation for approval and we have to make sure that we have got conditions and informatives that protect this, this land as we've been debating. So I don't know whether anyone's scribbled anything down any more than I have. I have, do you have, good Chris, it looks a bit neater than mine?
Thank you Chair, I have a, a list of conditions which I could go to, I read, read out. Okay.
Sorry, we need a reason to approve, do we? Oh, right. Can I have a reason for your suggestion councillor Isherwood?
Chairman, the public benefits of the application outweigh the identified harms.
Thank you.
Well, that's satisfied, Beth?
Chairman, if I could help, help the officers here. I think the way forward is, I would certainly like, if it's not already in there, propose a condition that the activity restricted to the playing of football. If the applicants feel that is an unreasonable condition, they can always appeal against it. And if they did that, I think our views as to their bona fides might possibly change. I think we can do just the same if we wish to with the extent in time of that information, we can grant it for five years. Again, if they think, and obviously if it all works well, then everyone will be, will be happy. But I think you put it very well, Madam Chairman, that because we are making a very unusual exception to policy, we're entitled to call the shots, to show we're trying to protect the adverse effects as much as we possibly can. So I think councillor Adams' points are perfectly valid, but obviously we've all found the public imperative stronger. But I think we are fully entitled to put down any condition that we think, providing it's not in Wensbury terms unreasonable, which this clearly isn't, and I think Patrick very wisely put it. If we're making such a big, big exception, we are entitled and indeed, I think, expected to do our duty by the residents, to make it as tight as the proverbial something or other. So people get exactly what they expect and nothing more. Thank you.
I suppose I really ought to make sure that that's the will of the committee, that we do put in these exceptions that are, as we know, slightly tight and not necessarily as loose as officers would like us to put in, but we feel in these circumstances, exception to policy, we wish to make this, these points. Everyone quite happy with that on the, yes?
Yes.
I've written down the, the two conditions as it was, one was the overall, are you there Chris to come up with this? Was the overall management plan, including the noise management plan, to be agreed in writing before anything is, is started. A landscape plan, including obviously boundary treatment to the west and any other part of it as part possibly of the noise management plan. And then informatives on floodlights, PA systems and ancillary buildings. Is there anything else that we have missed? I think that's, I think councillor Mullinah had the football only putting in, so do you want to just remind us what you said?
Certainly, the only activity permitted is association football, otherwise known as soccer. There is another, another game which occasionally is watched on television as well. And the permission is granted for five years.
Right, so have we got a, a full list of conditions and informatives that we can add to this application? Because we still haven't, right, have we, right, can you, can you put into words, Chris, please? Can you put into words, Chris, please, all the points that we have raised?
Yep. Okay. Yep. So, conditions for the planned numbers, and then on to the restricted to football, that a management plan is submitted... Association football. That a management plan is submitted and agreed in writing. That a landscaping plan is also submitted and agreed in writing, and that permission be granted for a period of five years. Other conditions, based on the consultees that we would put forward as well, relate to reptile and amphibian mitigation, that works should see dormouse be found during the implementation of the scheme, to satisfy the needs of Sport England, that an assessment of the ground conditions is done prior to the laying of the pitches, to satisfy highways requirements, that the lane of... that the parking is laid prior to the use of the pitches, that the car parking management plan is submitted and agreed in writing, and that the pitches are... Sorry, that a noise management plan is submitted and agreed in writing, and that the pitches are strictly limited to the hours of nine to five Saturday, nine thirty to five thirty on Sunday, and no games shall begin later than three o'clock on... Sorry, no games shall start later than two o'clock on Saturday, and three o'clock on Sunday. And a condition restricting the use of PA equipment.
And, yes...
PA or sound amplification.
Sound amplification, floodlights, lighting, we've got all of that.
Yep.
Is everyone quite happy that in that we have captured all our reservations about and the conditions we need to apply, and the informatives that we want to see? So, given that long list, and I won't ask Chris to read them out again, can I see all those in favour of the alternative recommendation to grant permission?
That's eight, Chairman.
And those against? And any abstentions? In that case, permission is granted, subsequent to all the conditions being met. Thank you very much, indeed. Well, I don't think we can possibly... Right, thank you. Can we move on then to our last item subject to public speaking? A3 WA 2018 1796, direction of four dwellings at Tilford Green Nursery. And... So carried away in all of that. Lost track of who's going to... It's Chris again, is it, who's going to introduce this?
Thank you, Chair. The site is located to the west of Tilford Green. The aerial photograph shows... Sorry, the aerial photograph is there to demonstrate to members the countryside and wooded character of the area. The proposed block plan shows the location of the four dwellings proposed, and the associated garages. Photograph one is looking to the west, towards the end of the site. Members... I'd just like to point out to members the polytunnels on this photograph. Photograph shoot... Sorry, photograph two is looking towards the Tilford Institute. Photograph three is looking towards Tilford Green from within the site, whereby existing screening exists. And photograph four is looking towards the Grade Two listed building, the Multhouse, which is beyond this hedge row. Photograph five shows the site from Tilford Nursery... Sorry, from Tilford Green. And photograph six and seven show the general extent of the existing structures on the site. The scheme proposes four slightly differently designed houses. And the matters of consideration on this application are the impact on visual amenity, impact on the conservation area, green belt and residential amenity. Officers recommend the application for refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And as I said, this is subject to public speaking. Could I ask Mr Nigel Moreland, who objects to the scheme, to come to the microphone? And once again, you have four minutes, and when you press the big button.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed on the matters for consideration, it doesn't mention, but it is also in an AONB. And given the concerns you've just been expressing on preserving the AONB, I thought I would just flag that for you. To put this in context, I have been a neighbour to this site in the Multhouse for over twenty years, and have seen the long history of applications on this site, all of which have been refused, and which have been subject of a number of appeals, which have also been refused. I think one of the key things is, you have just decided to overrule your own advisers and the AONB, on the basis there are very special circumstances. I suggest that there are no very special circumstances that would bear on this case. And in fact, at one of the parish council meetings, when we asked the applicant whether there were any special circumstances, they said no. It may be proposed to you that the site is previously developed and is brownfield site. It is not, and your own officers have advised you as such, as have some very qualified appeals gentlemen, who have also agreed that it is not a brownfield site, it is an agricultural site. It may also be suggested that it looks ugly at the moment. Well, the aerial photograph that you saw is an historic one, and doesn't actually show the extent to which a site that was slowly reverting to nature has actually been cleared by the applicants, so I'm afraid the site is deliberately ugly. There's also a suggestion that this would provide additional housing. Well, Tilford apparently is well on target to meet its housing needs, and I would suggest that four houses of this nature are not exactly a great way of providing housing for lower-income families, or anything like the two-bedroom houses that are in great demand in our area. Having said all that, it is not as if we are NIMBYs. I have said right from the start, in objecting on a number of occasions to previous applications on this site, that we would actually support an application on this site for two or three houses, and we have said that all along. And we have offered to consult with the applicants in order to try and achieve an agreement that we would then support, and identify some special circumstances in terms of amenities provided to the village. One of the things that I have spotted is that in the papers that have been presented to you, there isn't actually a reference to the representations from the Surrey Hills AONB planning adviser, who also says that they can see a case for two houses, or two structures on this site, providing two dwellings... Three dwellings, in fact, as long as they are set further back and are of a different nature to the designs that are proposed to you. And they have again offered to consult with the applicants in order to put forward a more professional, more suitable, more appropriate development on this site, which we would also support, especially as the access to the site has now, especially at weekends, become much more difficult, as the result of the decision you have just taken, which will of course massively increase the amount of traffic coming through Tilford on weekends, when in particular, access through Tilford is difficult. So, as I say, we are not totally against development on this site, but we think this proposal is completely inappropriate, and agree with your officers completely.
Thank you, Mr Moreland. Could we ask councillor Less now from the parish council to come forward and address the committee? And the same applies, four minutes when you press the large button. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you. It's councillor Lee, actually, just to... That's okay. Miss prints happen. This has been a greatly debated application in our little village. In fact, during our planning meeting, I was actually swayed to support this application, particularly as the applicant said that if this application wasn't successful, his alternative would be to create a business or outlet centre with business units. For the village, residential housing would of course have been preferable to that. However, it's this application that we are considering today. And since that meeting, we've had a change of view following a change of chair, and so we no longer have a casting vote, and we have a majority of objectors. We view this application from a material consideration perspective, following feedback from yourselves. Given the environment has not changed since the last refused application, we would be objecting on the following grounds. This area of land, next to our iconic village green, is agricultural land in the green belt AN... AONB conservation area. And we have also recently learnt that it may also be subject to an Article Four order. Given the size of the dwellings, we feel this development would have an impact on the openness of this green belt site. Although we do recognise the applicant has stated extra screening, I still believe it's highly unlikely that the development would not be seen at all from the footpath along the side of the development and the village green itself, as the houses are actually very far forward on the site. The entrance and exit to site is over an unmade path, and we consider this most unsuitable. The exit is actually the point where it meets the Tilford Road, the junction of Tilford Street, and the stop-go traffic over the West Bridge. And we have a high number of vehicles driving through the village. We have a speed watch scheme, and we've monitored our vehicles, and they use it as a cut-through from hind head to far, along this route, past the infant school, ninety children between five and eight, and there is traffic chaos associated with the school mornings and afternoon. Add this to cars speeding past at other times, plus parking issues, I think this would consolidate our traffic and parking issues. It also have an impact on our dark village. We have no street lighting, and the dwellings are likely to flood the area with artificial light, which wouldn't be welcome from our residents. Knowing the village as well as we do, from a village perspective, it doesn't offer the type of housing that we need, such as smaller housing, for example, two bedrooms, perhaps three bedrooms. And on this site, there's no affordable housing. Therefore, we support the fact that it doesn't meet the needs of the borough. So just to clarify, we recommend refusal.
Thank you, councillor Lee, and apologies again for getting your name wrong. And now could I ask Mr Matthew Birch to come forward, who is a supporter of the scheme?
Thank you, Chair. I obviously have a prepared speech, which is partly, and it's ending changing, because up until just now, we believed we had support from the parish council from their voted meeting in November of last year, where they voted in favour of the application. So that change is a surprise. Anyway, I shall carry on reading what I've got. This application is an amendment to the previous application, which you saw in May of last year. Our core value for justifying this application is that the site is central to the village in a proximity more extreme than usual for a commercial nursery. It is in no way isolated, being neighbours with the village hall and a 500-year-old house which is with its entrance opposite the village green, a stone's throw from the primary school, church and pub. We assert that a very local consideration be taken in this regard. In addition, the entrance area is shared with the house next door. A public footpath and the area in front of the entrance is habitually used for parking cars. The submitted traffic survey and conclusions from highways are clear in that residential use is preferable to commercial. Since the last application, we've paid attention to the comments, observations and reasons for refusal. A comprehensive FRA and sequential test has now been submitted, and both are clear in that they conclude the land is fit to be developed. The FRA dismisses a likely flood risk and a sequential report is in favour of this site being developed. The officers have chosen to disagree with these findings, even though the report's authors are respected consultants at Argyle Environmental, who often work for councils. In regard to the sequential test, the officers cite the Tilford Garage development, which is already being built, and under the LAA, a site at Dockenfield Stud, which is again already being built with multiple homes. A recent additional application for four houses was refused at the Dockenfield location, and we're unsure how these two already developed and unavailable alternative sites are relevant. In addition, the Dockenfield location is approximately five kilometres away, which seems excessive as a geographical comparison. Neither site was considered by Argyle Environmental to be relevant to the sequential test, and they confirm they consider their test to have passed. Two 106 agreement issues have been raised, as outstanding, but we are of course happy to see them made a condition of planning. Last time, the committee was concerned about the repetitive nature of the designs, that three of the four houses were the same design. We have now addressed this with four individual designs. They're still oak-framed from border oak, but each house is very different. There were observations about the screening from the conifers at the front of the site. Contrary to the officers' assertions, the trees are in our control, being on our land, and originally planted in the 1960s to form a windbreak to protect younger trees. They are now nearing end of life, but in the event that they should fall due to high winds or simply old age, any incumbent landowner is under no obligation to replace them. This aspect of change is therefore inevitable. We have, however, made a plan to create a replacement line of trees and hedge row in a buffer zone behind the existing conifers. When the time comes and the existing conifers pass to the tree afterlife, we will have replacements already in situ. Any owner of Tilford Green Nursery would naturally look to the land for its commercial or residential potential, but we know there is a local appetite to have the land locked up as residential, preferring to remove the commercial nature from the immediate village environs. Now, I go on to say as validation for this, Tilford Parish Council voted in its favour last year, so the ending is somewhat changed. And I'll thank you for listening and leave it there.
Thank you very much, Mr Birch. Thank you. Members, we're over to you. This is very... Sorry? This is very different, of course, because we're now looking at the built form in the green belt and the AONB. So councillor Adams?
I've become ambivalent about this, because, as you say, policy says, as the officers have recommended, that we shouldn't build here. But then recently, of course, there's been a whole series of permitted... New permitted development rights or nurseries by the government, which in fact would, if we turn this down, allow some commercial development there without our say-so. So I think that as the applicant has modified the design in respect of really everything that we asked the last time this was submitted, a few months ago, I can see that actually this may be the least worst option for this site. Because once the commercial activity starts there, then in a few years later, obviously, it is a brownfield site, and a new housing development could be proposed. In respect of having smaller houses, well, of course, that was the suggestion that was put forward for the first application here, which had ten bungalows on it. And that was... We turned down quite significantly. Four of those were affordable, because we said, well, it was overdevelopment of this site. And that was supported at appeal, so it came to an end. So now, and looking at the way that the government is treating other nurseries, and the sort of appeals that we're losing at the moment, I would not object to this site being developed.
Thank you. If I could just say, the inspectorate can be as inconsistent as it likes, but I'd but I do feel we as a committee and as a council should be as consistent as we possibly can be. And we are looking here at built form in the Green Belt and we have to apply the test that we applied last time to this site. As I say, the previous site was an exception. We were dealing with something green. We weren't dealing with the built form here. It's four large houses and its potential effect on the Green Belt and the A O N B. And I think we as a committee and as a council should be consistent. But it's entirely up to you, committee. Anybody else? Oh, councillor Adams back in.
I will point out that we have just approved eighteen homes of similarly large types of homes just down the road in Chert Nursery. So, you know, we're not being in... That's in the A O N B, Green Belt and next to the Weldon East Bar as well. So that's... We would not be inconsistent by actually accepting this if that's what was decided.
I'll take your word for that councillor Adams. I don't know the site you're talking about, don't know how much built form is already on it or anything else. Any other councillor wish to contribute to this, please? Can we not have debates within debates? Because it's very off-putting and not very polite. Does anybody else wish to speak to this application? Unfortunately, he's not put his name down to speak, so... Until he does so, I can't call him. Does anybody else wish to add anything to the debate on this one? Councillor Mullin, no?
Yes, I'll ask the question I was asking councillor Adams. This other site comes as something of a surprise to me. If anyone does know anything about it, could I invite them to inform us, please?
And you've stirred councillor Isherwood into life.
It is indeed by the Bell and Dragon opposite Avalon Nursery. It was approved for, I think was it Millgate Homes, I think?
Mulberry.
Mulberry, I think.
Right, I do know the site and I think it is very different circumstances councillor Adams. But anyways, can we concentrate on the site in front of us, which is a site in the Green Belt for four large houses? And does anybody else wish to contribute to the debate? Or shall we move straight to the recommendation? Officers, do you wish to add anything to what you've already said? Patrick?
So just to clarify the differentiation between greenfield and brownfield. A garden centre that has primary purposes for retail can reasonably be considered as brownfield. A garden nursery that is for the production of plants etc. is considered greenfield. There's a distinct classification between, in use class in relation to that. So I can perfectly understand a confusion relation to that. But in this particular case, this site is classified as greenfield.
Councillor Mullin?
Well, with that very useful clarification, I agree that it's very hard to see reasons why we should change our tack from what we said last time. It is a completely different case from the one we've just decided. So I can see no good reason for disagreeing with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Mullin. I think, you know, the applicant has tried hard to address concerns, but ultimately, it's the Green Belt and it's, you know, four large buildings in the Green Belt, which is always going to be an issue, I think, for this committee. So can I move to the recommendation, unless anyone else has indicated, which is on page 99 of your report? That permission be refused for the seven reasons and the two informatives are on page 99 and 100 of your report. Can I see all those in favour of refusal, please?
That's seven, Jim.
And those who are against refusal? And those... And those who wish to abstain? Thank you very much. So that is, permission is refused for the reasons outlined in the report. And we move on to the last application. Olivia's been sitting there, having been dismissed in the first one. This is not subject to public speaking, so Olivia, if you would like to introduce this one. Application B1 WA 2018 1641 at Five Hearts Grove in Chittingfold. I'm just talking while you get the thing up on this... No, don't worry. I can carry on. Right, you're nearly there.
Yeah, apologies, members. If I could just draw your attention to the update sheet quickly, where we have just confirmed the response from Chittingfold Parish Council, which was not included in the officer's report, confirming they have no objection to the application. Also, the previous scheme at the site is now subject to appeal. The application site lies to the south of Hearts Grove and comprises a two-storey semi-detached property. The existing elevations are shown here. Here we can see the existing front porch, existing single-story side projection and the rear canopy shown here, which are to be demolished as part of the proposal. The application proposes the construction of a replacement front porch, the construction of a two-story side extension. This would be set with... Sorry, this would have the eaves height set slightly below the existing eaves of the property. The application also proposes a single-story rear extension. This drawing here shows the proposal in relation to the neighbouring property, number three Hearts Grove. It shows the land levels of the neighbouring garden, where the neighbouring property is set below the application property. However, the majority of the neighbouring garden is at the same ground level as the application site. The slide shows the proposed floor plans. As you can see, this element would be the first floor of the side extension. The application also proposes widening the existing front access slightly, shown here. The proposed block plan also shows the side extension would be located one metre from the neighbouring boundary with number three Hearts Grove. The photos here show the front and rear elevations of the property. The photos on this slide are taken from the garden of the neighbouring property, three Hearts Grove, facing the application site. Here's the existing single-story side projection, which would be replaced with a two-story extension. Officers are recommending refusal of the application. Matters for consideration are the impact on neighbouring amenity. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Olivia, and thank you for your patience, sitting there waiting to present that. Members, over to you. Are you going to start councillor Inchbald?
Thank you, chairman. Well, I can follow the officer's reasoning in recommending refusal for this. But the sole issue is a very subjective one. So, which is why I wanted it to come before this committee and why I wanted a site visit. And I think the site visit was very informative. Yes, there is going to be a significant increase in the bulk and scale of the existing dwelling. The question is whether or not it is sufficiently overbearing to be unacceptable. And I don't really think that it is. I don't think that the size of it and the fact that it is only extending as far back as the existing dwelling, I don't think it will cause any significant loss of amenity to the neighbour, rather. So I'm afraid I will be voting against the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I just ask a question about the application that's subject appeal? Is it very different from this one? I mean, what's the relationship between the two?
The application currently subject to appeal is for, is proposed the same development with regard to the single-story rear extension, front porch and widening of the access. The only difference with the two-story side extension is that this current application proposes the side extension, which is, has a 30 centimetres lower eaves height and ridge height.
Right, so basically, it's the same application, but 30 centimetres, did you say?
Yeah, the one subject to appeal is yes, 30 centimetres higher ridge line with the two-story extension and 30 centimetres higher eaves height.
Thank you, I just wanted that clarified. Councillor Mullin?
Thank you, chairman. And this is the third of my visits today. And again, it was extremely useful to go there and to be able to see things from the perspective of number three Hearts Grove. They have a door which opens directly out onto the relevant side of number five. And having determined and confirmed with the officer that we're talking about a 6.2 metre ridge height, which is 0.3 less than it was before. To quote your words, chairman, in terms of consistency, I'm not surprised that the last committee turned it down. You would have a very substantial edifice in front of you as you came out a very heavily-used door. And I for one, if the committee felt that the previous one was overbearing, the very small difference in height will make very little difference to that. There'll be a much larger mass directly in front of the side door. So I would be unhappy about not supporting the previous committee's decision and the officer's recommendation. That is purely my subjective opinion.
Thank you councillor Mullin. Olivia wants to come back first and then I'll take the...
Thank you, chairman. Just to clarify to members, the previous refusal was a delegated decision made by officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Still a decision of this council. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, chairman. This application on paper doesn't bear the same sort of resemblance when you actually visit the site. If I lived at this particular house, I would do exactly, or propose to do exactly what this applicant is proposing. There is a, they've narrowed the side extension, which is very ugly, in my opinion, but beauty's in the eye of the beholder, whatever. But they're going to invest quite a lot of money in this property and it's going to lift the property substantially. And I think it will be a benefit to the area. The impact on the neighbour is minimal, in my opinion. I couldn't see it personally too much because of the ridge height and the narrowness of the extension. I am unable to support the officers in this case. I can understand why they refuse, want it refused. But when you visit the site, as my colleague said, it is subjective and it's not going to make a lot of difference and it's going to, you know, make their lives a lot better. So I can't support the officer on this, I'm afraid. Sorry, thanks.
Remember, it's the unbalanced decisions that come to committee, not the easy ones. Councillor Round?
Thank you. I agree with what two of my colleagues have said. I was on the site visit yesterday as well. It's a pity we didn't know then of the appeal in progress on the previous application, although I don't remember it being mentioned. Not that this would make that much difference, because it is clear to me that the quote "overbearing" unquote nature of the extension, in my opinion, is less with this proposal than the existing property. It's some distance away from the boundary, whereas at the moment, that single-story extension goes right up to the boundary. At the moment, there are windows upstairs. I don't know if they're glazed or frosted or not, but through which it will be possible to look at the neighbour's garden. Whereas the proposed extension does not. It has roof lights that are different. You can't look through those unless you're very tall. So I can't see this is overbearing at all and I fully expected us to deal with this very swiftly today. Thank you.
Olivia, do you just want to come back on the distance from the boundary? Just so we're clear exactly, the points that councillor Round has just made. Because, you know, Olivia went on the site visit too, believe it or not. And, you know, I just really want to be clear what the issues are in terms of overlooking.
Thank you, chairman. Just to clarify, the distance from the boundary of the existing single-story side projection is 0.35 metres and the proposed two-story side extension would be a metre from the boundary with the neighbouring property. Thank you, chairman.
And is there any overlooking with windows or is it roof lights? I just really want the whole thing absolutely clear before we make a decision.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, as shown on the east elevation, there'd be no first-floor windows, only roof lights are proposed in the side. Thank you.
Councillor Isherwood?
Thank you very much, hon, chairman. On page 108, it talks about one letter being received expressing support for the following reasons, which is number three Ewens. Is that the immediate neighbour?
I think that should read number three Hearts Grove. Ewens is on the other side of Woodside Road and it wouldn't impact on Ewens at all.
Yes, thank you, chairman. That was the address that was written on the representation letter. We can try to clarify this if we can get it. Apologies.
Is it stopping you from making a decision councillor Isherwood? Does everyone feel that we need to get this answer before we move to the recommendation? Or do you think we can move straight to the recommendation? Thank you very much. Officers, you don't wish to say any more? Or members, let's move then straight to the recommendation. That permission be refused for the reasons set out on page 120 of your report. Can I see those all in favour, please, of a refusal? And those who are against refusal? And anybody abstaining on this one? In that case, please, could I have a new recommendation? And a second, please? And a reason?
The proposal does not constitute significant harm to the amenity of the neighbouring, of the neighbour.
Right. Your proposal is that we...
And we approve...
...permission be granted.
Permission be granted because...
Let me just get a second. Councillor Edwards to second. And can you just repeat your reason for that councillor Inchbald?
Now you are, now you are testing me. Permission be granted because the proposal does not constitute or will not cause significant harm to the amenity of the neighbour at number three. Hearts Grove.
Right. Do we need to add anything to that recommendation, Olivia?
Thank you, chairman. If I could just suggest a couple of conditions. The first one relating to the plan numbers. Condition two relating to the no variation of the type and colour of external materials shall be made, to be used in the construction as shown on the application form, shall be made without the consent of the local authority. And a third condition, to ensure that no windows or other openings other than those... authorised by this permission, are constructed in the east elevation of the two-story extension in the interests of neighbouring amenity for an overlooking. Thank you, chairman.
Olivia, you seem to leap from one to three. I mean, I was scribbling down. Can you just go through those again? I'm not saying you did, it's just my, my brain didn't keep up with your speech.
Sorry, thank you, chairman. Condition one would be plan numbers. Condition two relating to the materials used to be in accordance with what is stated on the application form. And then condition three to restrict any further windows on that side elevation of the two-story extension without permission from the local authority. Also, just an informative, highway, on highways, grounds, to state that the permission granted shall not be construed as authority to carry out any works on the highway, and prior approval must be attained from the highway authority before these works are carried out. Thank you, chairman.
What about standard hours of construction and the usual ones? Will they be included as well, please?
Yes.
Hours of construction, any others that we need to include? Everyone quite happy then with those conditions and informatives?
No, on Saturday, Sunday.
Yes, our standards, our standard hours. So, so with those four conditions, the plan numbers, no variation to materials, other than approved in writing with the officers, no other windows, other than those in the current application to be constructed, to protect the amenity of the neighbour, and our standard hours condition of work with an informative on highways, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please?
Seven, Jen.
And all those against granting permission?
One.
And any abstentions on this one?
One.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's been a long evening. Enjoy the rest of it, whatever it is, and thank you very much, all of you, for your patience.